I've got six o'clock, please silence your devices, cell phones, et cetera, so we can have a quiet meeting. So at six o'clock, I call this meeting a Saginaw City Council order, please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Item number two is the indication for that, Pastor Michael Orr, welcome sir.
Let's pray together. Righteous and loving Heavenly Father, we're so humbled and grateful to be able to be in this great city and to be a part of this community. We're grateful that you have provided for us and taken care of us through hard times and good. And we pray now, Lord, as we enter into the holiday season, that you would be with those who are struggling financially, those who might be homeless, those who are suffering. May we, as neighbors and as a neighborhood of people who look out for each other, take care of those who are in need. Please bless those who are with helping hands and helping hearts, serving those who are underprivileged and those who are hurting. Help us all to be able to have a good holiday together and a good season together and to truly share love and fellowship and good works with each other. We thank you so much for this group of people and all the leaders of our community. I pray a blessing on the city council, I pray a blessing on all of those who are the heads of various departments in our city. May you bless them and their families, each one of them, keep them in good health, help them all to be able to prosper in every way, be with them through their hardships and struggles. And as they come together to make decisions that will affect all of our community, I pray for wisdom and knowledge and understanding in all that they do. I pray especially for safety for those who are first responders and others in our city and community who give up a part of their time during this season to make sure that other people are safe. I pray for those mourning and hurting and various tragedies that have happened in our community recently and I pray that you would be with those families that who are suffering and struggling in various ways. Thank you again for this great community, thank you for all the people who are a part of it. I pray that you would bless us and watch over us and keep us and guard us in all that we do. We ask you all these things, in your holy and blessed name we pray, amen.
Item number three is audience participation, if there is an item on the listening agenda you wish to speak about, please see the city secretary, fill out one of these forms. If it is a public hearing, you don't need to do that, I will call for speakers, people to speak when appropriate during public hearings, you can just approach and speak. I've got a lot of these tonight, if I forget you, please let me know, I apologize ahead of time for that. There's a lot of people, several have multiples, so please remind me if I don't call you for each item. Item number, so that's three, item number four is consent agenda. So, I think I had a request for a consent agenda item, I did. Number four D, is that D, it is D. Yeah, so we will pull D, any other items we need to pull from the consent agenda before I go through them all. Alright, then, we will consent agenda, A, action regarding minutes of November fifteenth, B, action regarding cancellation of December twentieth meeting, C, action regarding resolution twenty twenty-two, that's twenty-four, amending resolution number twenty-two, that's twenty-three, approving the twenty twenty-two, forty-eighth year Community Development Block Grant Award, E, action regarding individual product award with Kim Lee Horn Associates for ADA Transition Phase Plan, Phase Four B Intersection Sidewalk Evaluation, F, action regarding grain easement maintenance agreement and AM and JK Development Lot Three, Block One, The Square Edition, G, action regarding purchase of real property located at three hundred West McElroy Boulevard and authorize the mayor to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase upon final approval of the city manager. Any questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion on A, B, C, E, F, and G.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve A, B, C, E, F, and G as presented.
Charlie Segal, please cast your votes. Most passed, thank you, let's reflect, Congressman Lawson is out of town on business. So we will go to item number four D. Four D, action regarding funding agreement with Tarrant County for Wagley Robinson Road reconstruction. Randy Newson, Director Public Works.
Thank you Mayor, Council, this item is for the county's participation in the funding of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that reconstruction of Wagley Robinson Road from East Bailey Boswell to the city limit line and including a signal. The developer will be paying for the reconstruction cost and then the hundred and fifty thousand will be reimbursed back to, through the developer for the cost of the project. We're looking at right at them, I think, I don't have the final estimate, but it looks like it's going to be right at a million dollars.
Alright, I do have an ask to speak on this from Michael Arbuckle, I believe?
Yes.
Oh, you can come up there, please. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Michael Arbuckle, live off of Stallion Lane, actually a new member here, been here about a year. My question is and concern is, on that actual intersection, if you think about it, you already have the new light that is being put over by the apartment complex, including two other lights where the railroad tracks enter, so I believe that should be three. So my question is, why are we having so many lots, spending that amount of money, when you could do something to save money as simple as an all stop, if you've already got so many lots? So that's my concern and question, why we are, is there some type of analysis that we don't know that would warrant such a need?
I know anytime we put in a signal, we do, we being the city, have to look at signal warrants. And so, there's twelve different ways a signal can be warranted, whether it's traffic, pedestrian traffic, or existing crashes. So, I believe the city is working with the developer and that signal would only be installed if it is warranted. It wouldn't be installed if it wasn't. Other reasons you couldn't put in a signal would be if it's too close to those other signals. But I don't, I don't think the spacing would be an issue.
Do we know how close it is from one to the next? Because like I said, it seems like you have four. So I don't, I guess, just from the outside looking in, and I know, I pulled the open records, crash records, you've had twelve wrecks there within the past five years, four or five of those were major, the rest were minor. So warranted, that's a lot of money for so many lights. So I was just wanting to bring it to the council to be like, is there not another way to save money for the city by putting up just an all stop?
Yeah, I think we can take another look at how it was warranted and make sure it was. A four-way stop, just at a glance, seems like it would be pretty rough with the Bailey Boswell traffic. But we could always take a look, I do believe this, I'm not super familiar with this item, but the funding is coming from the developer, correct, not the city? If that happens to alleviate your concern.
It's just, it was just kind of more of a, I didn't understand why there was just going to be one light after another light, after another light after another light. When you could do something as simple as a stop, have an all stop there and then move up to the next light. So that's just what I wanted to bring to the city council.
Yeah, we can take that back and double check and warranty.
The plans are not finished yet, we haven't reviewed the plans yet, have seen them hands-on, but...
Just something to put in the back of your mind, I guess. And maybe a way to stop the nonviolence, I mean, you know, God forbid y'all thought about putting a roundabout, but, because we already know how that is. But I think something as simple as a four-way stop sign, all stop, would be more common sense in the looks of it compared to so many stoplights, one after the other, especially when you start thinking of of constant traffic. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and yeah, just to clarify, this is the funding, so this is to get the project started, which will include design, which will answer some of the questions I think that you've asked, so, but thank you for bringing that up. Any other questions on four D? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the funding as presented.
Paul Segal, please cast your votes. Most passed, thanks sir, thank you Randy. Item number five, presentation of two thousand twenty-two Economic Development Award and Merit from Texas Economic Development Council, that says me and Keith, I'll let Keith start.
Well, thank you. Recently, we were, the city was recognized for our building improvement grant program, this is the second year in a row we've been recognized by the Texas Economic Development Council and we received an award, a statewide award.
Awesome.
And Keith is always being a little too modest, but we have in the last few years really put efforts and money into economic development and it's starting to slowly pay off, what we've seen in stuff coming to town, but also in awards. So we were nominated for stuff at TML, we also received this award, so it's just really starting and we put, in the past, years ago, we sort of dipped our toe in economic development and did not do a good job. Once we decided to really go serious with it and especially when we brought Keith on, added that to his repertoire, we've really made some excellent progress. If you don't know Keith, he is outstanding with reaching out to folks, he's got a great touch, he, economic development is hard. You are literally fighting against other cities and there's a lot of money involved. So people get upset and angry and concerned and there's a lot of backstabbing, it's a very vicious environment, but Keith navigates it very well and has had many great successes, and more to come, so. This award, and I'll read it, from the Texas Economic Development Council, two thousand twenty-two Economic Development Award, merit recognition presentation to the city of Saginaw for outstanding achievement in community economic development. Congratulations. I probably want to take a picture, don't we? Page two, picture. Want everybody in, or you're just being Pete, what do you want, for everybody? We'd like to stand up like we've done before? Can you stand like this? Everybody? Alright, everybody can scoot in around this, here, let's let Keith hold it, this is an award, we'll just get in here closely. We get it? Can you see everybody?
Yep.
It's nice to get some awards, it's always exciting. Alright, so moving forward, item number six. Six, at six twelve, we're in a public hearing. Consideration action regarding recommendation planning commission on ordinance twenty twenty-two, that's zoning, non-identified properties, NMU, Neighborhood Mixed Use zoning in the city of Saginaw. There's a lot listed here, I'm going to get Abra up here first and then Salvador. Where's Abra?
Tonight.
Oh, I didn't see you. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. My name's Abra Nussar and I am a planner with Peloton Land Solutions representing the city this evening. We are recommending that this item be tabled this evening, but I'm going to walk you through the overview of the item and kind of go into our recommendation from there. So, this is Keith, I'm ahead of Keith, hold on. Oh, thank you. Okay. So while that's loading, the comprehensive plan was adopted in March twenty twenty-two and in the comp plan, it did have zoning as a key action to implement the vision. And Neighborhood Mixed Use was one of those future land use designations and the city council actually adopted the Neighborhood Mixed Use standards in September of twenty twenty-two. Now, these, this action is to apply those zoning standards to a few specific properties. P&amp;Z did recommend approval on November eighth, with the exception of two parcels that will go through. So, it is to establish standards, like I said, for a few parcels and encourage envisioned investment that the comp plan did detail. So people in Saginaw are looking for more restaurants and shopping and entertainment, not a lot of traffic impacts, we know that traffic is a challenge, so planning ahead for that is important, but also compatibility with future commercial uses with existing neighborhoods. So right now, some of our zoning districts do allow some, you know, uses and heights and whatnot that might not be as compatible with residential uses, so this is looking to really protect existing neighborhoods and make special places. So this is our adopted future land use plan, you can see here that the Neighborhood Mixed Use designation is in pink. We're not proposing all of these go at once, so just taking an initial batch. So it is ten of those proposed with this item and we'll walk you through each one, but it's supposed to be low-density development and just neighborhood-serving commercial, open spaces, and very sensitive transitions to residential neighborhoods. Again, the purpose is to get those commercial uses in, but we know from a development side that having residential available to these commercial developments can really help from a lending perspective, but also keep those commercial uses alive. So, the NMU district does require a minimum of seventy percent of the development frontage along major roads to be commercial uses and then they can have either residential uses above those restaurants, shopping and that type of thing, or residential in the back. So, one of the reasons that we are recommending tabling this evening is in conversations with the development community and also our intent as we know it to be. We have some proposed clarifications that we'd like to run through with you this evening. And then, what we would recommend is processing an NMU district amendment prior to applying this zoning to these parcels. So rewind a little bit, that's why we're taking it slow, right? We're just doing a few parcels at a time and then just kind of getting used to the rezoning process and we're going to make sure that we're doing it right for Saginaw. So, one of the clarifications that we'd like to propose to you this evening that is not up for consideration with this item, so this would be one of the reasons we're recommending tabling, but we would bring it back to you, is that we want to make sure that those commercial uses come in, in a timely manner, because that's our intent, right? So what we're requiring here with this proposal would be that it be limited to maximum eight dwelling units per acre, per one acre on that acre, unless or until commercial uses are constructed and operational. So it really limits, you know, if it's a large property, say it's a hundred acres, they could not group their density prior to commercial uses coming in. So it really incentivizes them to put in that commercial because, you know, they're going to get very, very few units before that commercial comes in. The second clarification is that once those commercial uses are in, then they can group their density as long as they're meeting those other restrictions. So they still can't go higher than two stories, they still have to do all the buffers and all those wonderful residential protections that we've talked about, but once those commercial uses are in, which is what we're trying to get, then they can group their density within the development as long as they're compliant. So it wouldn't be per acre on that acre, they could move it around as long as they were compliant. And then the third clarification, which would be the final one, is to allow for a modification to the build-to-zone requirement. A build-to-zone is different than a front yard setback. So a front yard setback, you know, if it's a minimum fifteen foot, then you have to put your building at least fifteen feet away from the street. A build-to-zone means that you have to put your, front of your building within a certain area. So this build-to-zone requirement really incentivizes them to put the parking in the back and get that main street feel along the street that we're looking for. So this proposal would say, if you come to city council because there's a forty-foot electrical easement in the front, we may minorly modify that build-to-zone requirement for you so that it can accommodate your development without going to the Board of Adjustment or ZBA for a variance. So it's giving some, just some modification abilities if that condition is present in a very special circumstance. So it wouldn't require like a planned development district, it could just be a modification at that time. So those are the three clarifications that we're looking to bring forward. There's also an implied lot coverage maximum, but we would also bring that forward as well just to make sure that we're keeping those open spaces that we know are important. So we're looking to make sure that everything is as you intend. So going to run through this just a little bit further, these are the parcels that in P&amp;Z's recommendation that they recommended to remove. This was based on feedback received at the public hearing from these property owners. I can let them speak, they might be in attendance this evening if they wish to provide their comments for the record. My, my general take was that one of them wasn't quite sure what was applicable and they just, they weren't sure what would be in their favor versus not, they were just looking to keep what was existing. And then the second one was under the impression that their development would not comply, or something along those lines. So I'll let them speak to their, their issues. This is the first one, which is at the northeast corner of Old Decatur and WJ Boaz. This is the second one at, go ahead, what?
Boz.
Boz, I'm sorry. I have another community, but it's Boaz, but with an E on the end. Old Decatur and, it's not Starry, it's something else there, but it's labeled Starry. And then third is this one at the northeast corner of McElroy and Old Decatur. And fourth one is southeast corner of McElroy and Old Decatur. This is separated on your agenda for voting purposes, but I'm just running through these all at once. Five is northeast corner of Old Decatur and Longhorn. Six is northeast corner of Old Decatur and Longhorn, but not the hard corner, so behind the hard corner. Seven is on the east side of, I can't see, Woodcrest? Oh, southeast corner of McElroy and Woodcrest, thank you. And then eight is south side of McElroy and east side of Woodcrest. And nine is northeast corner of Bailey Boswell and Comanche Springs. And then ten is northeast corner of Bailey Boswell and Sassafras Street. This one in particular, we've had conversations on since P&amp;Z and it's our understanding that there are different, there could be different interests north of the creek versus south of the creek and I believe one of those applicants is at least in attendance this evening, so I'm happy to answer any questions after they speak, if you still have some. And then, next steps, again, our recommendation is to table this item and the next item, this evening, they are connected. And allow us to bring forward a couple of NMU district amendments to you before you apply them to these properties. And then, after those NMU district amendments would be acted upon, we would bring back this batch to you and we would re-notify at that time, but it would not have to go to P&amp;Z again. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions for Abra before we hear from some of the property owners?
Do these zoning changes come with traffic impact analysis?
Traffic impact analysis is typically done at the time of development and it would include the proposed uses and the proposed intensity of those uses at the time and could incorporate their driveway approaches and any decel lanes and whatnot that they're proposing, but we wouldn't know that until the time of development.
So we wouldn't even have any, some, we wouldn't have some sort of projection of what we would expect the traffic to be based on the information that you gave us?
So, we would know that it would be a low impact to traffic just based on the permitted uses that were proposed in the Neighborhood Mixed Use District, which are generally less intense than what was on these property, well, what is currently on the properties. So if we wanted to go through some of those uses, we could talk about how that traffic would function. But in general, for example, the community commercial district allows much more intense development than this would in terms of traffic.
Okay, well, the reason I'm asking is because I know one of those areas is located near the ILT and that's already just a traffic nightmare that we've not been able to resolve and anything that we add to it is not going to make our citizens happy. Even if it's ten cars, that, you know, until we get this resolved.
Were there questions for Abra? Oh, go ahead, Mayor.
For any of us that might live near one of these tracks, would we get a letter if we were within two hundred feet?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, we would just refuse ourselves if we got the letter? If we felt like we should?
In consultation with the city attorney if necessary.
And then if I didn't get a letter, then I would assume I'm more than two hundred feet from...
Yes, it's based on the certified tax rule, so as long as you were the property owner. Thank you. No problem?
Yeah, Paul, go ahead.
Property, I think it was number seven, isn't that the natural gas pumping station or whatever on corner of Woodcrest and McElroy?
It's my understanding there are some features left from what would have been there prior, but it has no active structure on the property, but I can't speak to that completely. Might be a property owner question.
Any other questions, folks? For Abra? Oh, sure, go ahead.
I just thought of this now. When we do actually vote on these, will they be done as a, as a group or individually?
They will be done as a group, with the exception of the next item, which is one of the parcels. So you could remove one of the parcels and separate your motion to only apply the zoning to certain parcels and not to others, you would just need to specify that in your motion.
That, in other words, if I did get a letter and I was within two hundred feet of one of the parcels, then that would be a reason to look at that separately, so I could not be involved in that discussion or the vote.
That's correct, so it's my understanding that one of the ten parcels, that vote will be separated, which is why one of the parcels was removed prior to the setting of the agenda. Does that answer your question?
And could we get a copy of your presentation? I'd like to be able to review, you know, your recommendations.
Yes, ma'am.
Rather than have to try to remember them when I go home tonight.
I would also like to, yes, but if you have any direction on what you would like to see when we bring that NMU amendment forward, since it is part of our recommendation, you know, tabling, I would love to hear that from you this evening, in addition to any comments you might have after taking a look, so feel free to give those to us this evening.
Yes, everybody take a look at the presentation once Abra sends it out and then send your feedback directly to her.
Sounds good.
We ready to hear from property owners? Any property owners here on these, I don't know who to call out, so. One at a time, come on. Please identify yourself and which property you're talking about.
Good evening, Adam Burke with North Forest Office Space, we're property ten. Our address is three oh five Heather Wild Drive, Flugerville, Texas.
Thank you.
Parcel ten, we're located at the northeast corner of Sassafras and East Bailey Boswell. It's currently zoned, community commercial, which is a perfect fit for our product. We develop strictly office space, single-story, neighborhood services, professional and medical office space. We're not in the business of doing any sort of residential development, so really there's no applicability from a residential component for us in the rezoning. We also do significant due diligence on our properties prior to closing, and we closed on this in June, with the existing zoning in place. We have significant investment, obviously, in the design of the site, we're working on construction documents currently. We had a conversation actually with the city for the preliminary plan, including utility layout configuration, site configuration, back in April this year. So it kind of came a little bit late in the game for us, just a little bit of a shock just to kind of see this change in zoning for us and with some of the uncertainty of requesting variances that were discussed at the previous meeting in the planning commission, we just feel we would like to be removed from the zoning district just because of where we're at with our plan and our design and the conformance with the existing code.
Abra, this is a question for you. So community commercial, and he's talking about a strip center, some professional offices, I'm sorry. I guess it was my understanding that would still fit in Neighborhood Mixed Use. Can you explain how that would work, please?
So depending on what uses are being proposed within the development, it would comply with Neighborhood Mixed Use. So there's a whole host of residential and commercial uses that would be permitted in NMU. However, the NMU district does... However, the NMU district does establish additional residential protection from adjacent commercials. So, the buffers, the screen wall, the limits on height, those types of things are more restrictive in NMU than they would be in community commercial.
But so, but I, well, is your concern the need to include a residence component or the screening?
It's not the screening, well, setbacks, dimensional standards. We also have a major easement on the front of the property for a water line that's existing in place. So, even conformance with the effect and kind of the aesthetic that we're going, or you're going for for the neighborhood mixed use, the placement of the building along that kind of, it offsets, I guess, the intent of what, you know, this code is for this particular property. Additionally, we, with flipping the buildings up front and the parking, I said, the existing design that we have in place, we would lose a ton of yield on the site and just, it would be a complete redo, restart from the beginning that we've had months and months and months of progress on, so.
Okay. So, just to, so I'm clear, neighborhood mixed use does not have to include a residential component?
That's correct. It can, it can be completely commercial.
Just within certain height restrictions, is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Who's next? You want to go? Come, yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Jesse Copeland, 500 Winstead Building, 2728 North Harwood, Dallas, Texas. I'm here on behalf of the owner of Track 9, located at the northeast corner of East Bailey Boswell and Comanche Springs Drive, as indicated in the staff report. The owner is in opposition of the city's proposed rezoning with respect to only the approximately five and a half acres south of the existing creek on site. So, you can kind of see it in this picture right up here. The creek runs through the southern portion of the property. And from the creek south is what we are opposed to for the rezoning.
Were you the one that sent us the email today?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, with the line, with the red liner?
Yes, sir. And if you guys haven't seen that copy, I have copies here for y'all. Hard copies right now, if you'd like, I can pass them out.
Yeah, email came out, what, at 4:00 PM today, it was late, so if you may not have had a chance to look at it. If you've got hard copies?
I do.
Is this a different one?
I had a request from her, is that part of your group as well?
That is.
Okay. Okay, I got you, okay.
We have one.
With the, with the new one, with the lot with this owner? Either way, we have it now.
Yeah, we got it now.
So, the depiction we talked about a second ago is on page three, just for your reference. So, the owner's owned the property for 80 years. And again, I really just want to reiterate that we do not oppose the rezoning for the northern part of the tract as we already have single-family development contemplated for that portion. However, because of the owner's vision for the southern portion, we do not, or we do oppose the rezoning for that. And I will be here for any questions.
Can I ask what the vision is?
It's not clear at this time. But I know from conversations with the owner that there are significant portions of the NMU that prohibit some of their ideas, what they want to do there. I know proximity to the creek and the size of that kind of buildable portion presents specific problems and, and other things in regard to development of that portion. And so, that's, that's really all the information I have for that.
And I've heard that property has some Waters of the America impact as well. Has that been taken into account? Is that part of the concern?
It, it could be, but I can't speak for sure.
Okay. Council, any other questions for this gentleman?
This is probably more for Abra than for you, sir. Is it possible to split the zoning on a single tract of land? Or does it have to be zoned as a single unit?
I'll answer your question with three things, if I can remember the third by the time I get there. Okay, the first thing is you do not have to zone along parcel lines. So, you can establish zoning district boundaries as long as, like in this case, if you had a survey, you can't say the creek. You've got to have exact boundaries. And so, that's item number one. The second thing is the city, including myself, have met with the development team on this property. And we have seen multiple layouts with residential in the back and commercial up front that incorporate the creek and have a very nice trail and pedestrian connectivity between residential and commercial up front that comply with parking, get them great amounts of commercial uses and dumpsters and all that stuff as we intend that work perfectly fine. At least from a conceptual side on staff review. There's other things that are applicable on the development side. So, in terms of Waters of the U.S., during the comp plan, we were told that, I think, that this property had that. But there, there are some drainage considerations going through the middle of the property, but nothing that can't be addressed and that's already looked at on the due diligence side. So, one more consideration on this property is that black line that you see kind of under the teal line is the city limit line. So, above that line is the city of Fort Worth. So, this development is, it, it would probably come in together. But as the NMU district is written now, it would be considered both sides of the creek in terms of the word development. So, it stands as one piece today. It would be considered one piece, you know, in the future. So, even if it were sold and whatnot, they would still have to comply with the development standards if NMU were applied to this piece.
Other questions? Yes, Bren?
Sorry, just, just a quick question. Are you with the Winstead Law Firm?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Could you send me your protest letter, so just so I have it?
Absolutely. Would you like a hard copy?
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Any questions for this gentleman? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Who's next, Mr. Arbuckle?
So, my only question is on, on the basis of what's going on with the rezoning. Earlier, Councilwoman Big Horse made a statement about the TIA and the NMU, I think, go together. My, my profession is a commercial truck driver. So, my question is with all this going on, you're going to have even more of an impact on traffic, is what I would see. So, my question to y'all, hopefully goes along with this, is when it comes to your 287, is there not possibly a way, because I've seen it in multiple states, multiple cities, where you can divert the trucks over the tracks, using Jarvis as an example? And also down there towards Walmart on the Boswell, I believe that's the road Boswell, have them go down to Jarvis and turn to alleviate all the truck baggage that happens? Because I think once you start with development and everything going on, you're going to have even more commercial traffic. So, that's, I don't know if that falls into this, but I was wanting to bring that to the council's attention that you may, I don't know if you can do that. I don't know if that's something the city attorney would have to know because it is Highway 280, you know, Business 287. But to alleviate some of this, you know, god-awful traffic that you have going up and down 287. Because we, as a truck driver know, we cut through there to try to bypass what's going on on 35.
35, oh, yeah.
So, everybody knows that. We tell that to all the new truckers, cut through, cut through down, you know, through Saginaw. So, with that being said, are, are you going to get more TI, more of the traffic information as we get closer if this progresses? Because I think traffic's going to get 10 times worse than you've already got it now, especially when it comes to rigs.
You know, we do indoor traffic impact with each individual parcel when it starts to develop. You can't really do an impact assessment until you know what's coming. Can't do an impact assessment just on a blank piece of property unless you know what they're going to put there, proposing to put there. So, the good thing about neighborhood mixed use, this new we're moving to, it's less dense. That's number one, it's less dense. It does contain, you know, community, some kind of development plus residential combo, something like that. So, will have an impact more than a piece of dirt, absolutely it will. But depending on how much, that's hard to say.
Is it possible, or could it happen? I don't know if the, if you'd have to look into laws because of 287. Is there no way to divert the truck traffic over the tracks to where the predominant? I mean, that's where pretty much everybody's going, is we're going over the tracks to where all the warehousing and all that is. Same thing coming this direction to alleviate all this baggage from us, I'll say it too, from us, cutting through the city. Is that something that can possibly look there?
I don't know what our options are. Maybe I knew what our options are? Oh, go ahead.
So, with the comprehensive plan that was just drafted, traffic was one of the most major issues. That was definitely identified. Cities do have capabilities to reroute truck, truck traffic. 287 is heavily traveled, as you know. If it is a text dot roadway, we cannot restrict cars from driving on it, basically. But they can do some weight restrictions and, and some of those things. And I know the city's been working on like the signal timing and some other solutions that will improve traffic flow once text dot can sync up with some things. So, that's one thing.
It is a development to try to alleviate all that.
Yeah, but in terms of our zoning tonight, what we look at is not compounding the problem, not making it worse. So, we're really looking at low-intensity development, reducing the intensity of some of these parcels just due to their location. Since they're adjacent to residential, we really want to make sure that they are not too intense. But overall, as these rezonings come through to implement the comp plan, we're looking at not making the traffic situation worse and really trying to, you know, keep track of those traffic impacts by development, but also overall, just trying not to get those high-intensity uses in bad locations. And it's kind of vague, but.
Right. And I mean, that pretty much answers your question. It's just, you see the, the growth that there's possibly to make and you know traffic's going to get even worse than it already is. Or at least that's the way outside looking in. So, thank you very much, ma'am.
Thanks, sir, absolutely. Who's next? Who's not gotten up to speak yet? Oh, yes, sir, come on.
I don't have much of a voice, but the doctor said I'm not contagious.
We appreciate that.
My wife's wondering why I'm actually sick, but. So, my name's Chris K. Part. I am, my, my wife and I own parcel two, I believe it is. It's the one that sits in between ILT and one of the daycares. And we may be one of the few landowners for this with some of the clarifications that Abra has discussed and talked about. We first met with the city and met with Keith a while back. We spent six months working on the development. My wife, when we opened the Chick-fil-A down the street, and I, I know it's not in Saginaw, so the tax dollars are not coming here, and I apologize for that. So, it was not my wife or I's choice. I know. Which is one of the reasons why, we actually told the city, we love the city, we've been very invested. We moved our entire family here. We were looking for, looking for office space, which is why we originally did this, because we want to gather our 150-plus employees with their families. There's not a lot of good spaces to do that. We found this piece of property and we thought about building a couple of things. One, my wife said, there's no good coffee shops here. And so, she's like, we need a good coffee shop here. Their Starbucks is great, but, you know, great places for people to come and hang out. Within a three-mile radius of where we currently are, there's 26 some odd schools. So, you know, after moms or dads drop their kids off from school, they go to our restaurant, they go to Starbucks, they go to places like that, and then before and after pickup, there wasn't a great family place for them to come, hang out, spend time. And so, my wife and I, when we looked at this, we said, hey, this is great. We could put a, a venue in the middle of it that would accomplish our goals. But we also talked about opening it up to an event venue because there wasn't a great event venue in the city either. And so, we said we could do that so that that would pay for it because we don't do meetings all the time and just on Sundays. And the, the thought was, okay, well, we need to have a space like that. We also need to have some commercial space where we bring like coffee shop, family-friendly locations where people could come. Maybe some community space like what you might see out in Rosemary 38 Beach Town where there's a TV screen and people can come and bring their kids. Because we're close to schools, you can't have alcohol being served anywhere near there. So, it limits us on our restaurant options, but with ice cream, there's other types of things that are family-friendly we thought we could do. Like, one of the interesting things for us in our original plan is we did want to put some residential on the property as well. One of our big needs that we have personally is keeping great talent here. And there just weren't a lot of great places for great talents. My wife and I thought, well, if we could develop some housing, some residential housing along with this development, we could keep some of that for ourself to keep some of the good leaders that we've been able to recruit and attract in town. So, all this to say, our, our thought is we really like the idea of doing this because I think we were going to have to ask for a rezoning of a portion of it to be residential anyhow. With the event space, and obviously this could change with all of this, the impact is oftentimes from the school. So, that was one of the things we thought about. And so, I think the one of the things that really we'd appreciate, and I think the additional time and clarity to understand and go back with our engineers and go, what is actually possible? Is that ability to put the residential in different spots based on the entire size of the development. So, that was one of the things we really wanted to ask the city council to consider because we think that could really help us in moving this forward. We, we ended up buying another office building in Saginaw that temporarily has met our need to have a place in a training center. And so, it kind of pushed us back with development costs being significantly higher. And we're not full-time developers. We were like, okay, let's hold off, interest rates are high, development's high. But were we able to have some of these uses and be able to do more with the residential than what we thought may have been possible from a financial standpoint? It was really something that can incentivize us to try to move this forward faster. So, those are my thoughts. I don't know if you have any questions.
Any questions for the gentleman? Actually, your, your development sounds exactly like what we're envisioning when we start, start with the neighborhood mixed use discussion. So, I think it's, it fits you perfectly.
Yeah, it does fit us, so. Anyways, I thank you for considering that and considering the adjustments that Abra has talked about as well.
All right, thanks, sir. Any other business owners here that have not spoken? If not, I do have several folks that put in cards to speak. Jesse Copeland?
He already spoke.
Okay, all right. Mr. Pete, John Pete? Yes, sir, Mr. Pete?
Evening, this is John Pete. And I come up before you all again, and I hope you all can hear me and see me. Hey, this Planning and Zoning Committee, I didn't know she became the city manager. I, I don't know where he, most time I never see anybody sitting over there that's not, you know, an employee. So, if y'all put her on permanent, let me know. You permanent? I believe sometimes they're doing a halfway good job. This particular session, you got a good idea, table it. And what you ought to do is call for a town hall meeting for all of Saginaw before you spin these all off or combine them and get our input. This guy right here, I live right here, Whisperwood Estates, cut off from everybody else on Knowles, right behind this leadership school. So, you talk about traffic? I've been dealing with it since y'all put that school in there, okay? No offense to the school, they probably got good sta, good standards. But y'all put this into a town hall format. The Planning and Zoning Commission held this on election night, right next door. Bad form, Mr. Mayor, bad form. I believe that civic duty is to get all citizens involved. I can't pay attention to everything that's going on, a lot, a lot of people don't. But when you're having something that's a big-ticket item that affects all of us, business owners and citizens, residents, everybody else, should have been tabled, shouldn't even be brought up. Go to a town hall format. Your survey that you're putting out is junk. It's the same thing that these people put out in 2018 that I went to and participated in. And we don't want, well, maybe we do want chicken or maybe not. Not until you come back and reassess people's involvement and what they want in a town hall environment that'll take care of all these 10. I got a chance to go up there and with the, the commercial use up there and by 156 up there and those apartment the commercial use up there and, uh, by one, 156 up there, and those apartment buildings weren't even open, five of them. And that was tabled and shelved, and it's still the same thing, right, Ms. Copeland? Yeah. So I think everybody needs to get involved in town hall format. Get everybody involved in a town hall format. Table it, put it out to the citizens. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Uh, I also have, you may raise, Chris Cop, uh, that was you? Okay, gotcha. Great. Thank you. Do you want to leave yet? Okay. That's all folks I had to speak. It is a public hearing. Anybody else in the audience who did not turn in for me, you're allowed to speak at this time. Anybody else wants to say, uh, speak on this item?
Can I make a call?
Yes, sir.
I just want to say, number five up there is the 711 that's already developed.
Okay. So can you, can you go to that map, number five?
That was, wasn't that the hard corner that, no, it wasn't.
So some of these, uh, parcels do contain development as we move through the implementation of the comp plan. Um, it is, uh, sometimes, uh, existing development is, um, layman terms would be grandfathered. So what's already on the ground, if it was permitted to be constructed, um, then it, nothing happens to it. But if it were to go vacant for an extended period of time, then they would have to comply with the new zoning. So it just protects the city, uh, moving forward to comply with the vision at a later date.
What's an extended period of time?
Six months typically, I, yeah.
Thank you, Abra. Appreciate that. Anyone else? This is still a public hearing. All right, so at, uh, 6:51, take us out of a public hearing, and I will entertain a motion to table.
Mayor, I make a motion that we table item number six.
All right, Charlie second. Please cast your votes. You ready?
And Mayor.
Pause. Is it? Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, so this will be to table indefinitely, and staff will bring this back when it's ready after we make the textual change.
Do you want me to say that, or?
No, it's fine. It is, it's just, just for the record.
Okay. Thank you.
In other words, it's not tabled to the next meeting.
Gotcha. Appreciate that. Okay. So that's six. Item number seven, at 6:52, we're back in a public hearing. There's an action regarding recommendation planning is only more to this in ordinance 2029 dash, 2022 dash 29, recognizing prior description as a prior, and these two sections, which we'll talk about. So back to you, Abra.
Uh, so Mr. Mayor, this is the, uh, same item, different properties. Um, it is those two properties that, um, were on the slide, parcels three and eight, I believe. Um, sorry, I lost them in PowerPoint. Uh, but previously discussed, and the recommendation is to table. Indefinitely.
Counsel, any questions about this one? It is the same.
Same but different. Same, Mayor. It's just, if, if we want to satisfy the requirement for the public hearing, we should open it, hold the public hearing for this item only, and then close it, and then it's optional. We, we, well, so we wouldn't need to renotice the public hearing if we satisfy it tonight.
I already opened it. So we're open.
Apologize.
Uh, Counsel, any questions for Abra on this one? Again, it is a public hearing, folks. Anybody want to speak on this item? You are welcome to speak at this time. Approach the, uh, the bench, as it were.
Yes, sir, you do.
Table it, put it to a town hall.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Again, we're still in a public hearing. If not, at 6:53, I take us out of a public hearing, and I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we table item number seven indefinitely until they can bring it back to the council.
No second.
Cindy second. Okay. Please cast your votes. Oh, where'd Paul go?
I backed.
Oh, there you go.
I tabled it, so if you agree.
We're, we're voting to table this, item number seven. Did you vote?
He has a legal conflict of interest in that.
I'm sorry.
That's why we separated.
I'm sorry, Paul. All right. So Councilmember Falegi is abstaining from this one. All right. So do we have a, I, I don't see our vote totals. Did it pass?
It, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, folks. Thank you, Abra.
Thank you.
Moving forward, item number eight, consideration of action regarding acquisition of 2.18 acres tract of land situated in the B. Thomas Survey Abstract, uh, 1497 from Bonner Carrington in exchange for waiver of certain billing permit fees. For that, direct to public courts. Randy is.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, this, this little tract of land will go right along with the, uh, 4.6 acres that we've already acquired, uh, just south of, uh, the Bonner Carrington site that, uh, which is Mariposa. Um, they will, that we've looked at and targeted for possibly some, maybe a soccer complex. Um, that'll give us about seven acres of, of land that wraps around there. And so in order to acquire this, it's, uh, waiving the, the billing permit fees, which is about half the value of that, that property.
Counsel questions about this? There's no questions. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve. Item number eight is presented.
Second, Paul second. Please cast your votes. Thank you. Thank you, Randy. Item number nine, consideration of action regarding amending the food truck park fees and amending master fee schedule, ordinance 2022 dash 28. This is Councilmember Falegi and Councilmember Mary Copeland. So which one of y'all would like to, Paul?
Mayor and Counsel, um, this came up, um, we kind of had some food trucks that, uh, basically we're going to pull out, uh, if we implemented the fee structure that we adopted. So it's been put on hold. I've done some research in, um, 10 different cities, and basically it's anywhere from $50 on up to, uh, $300, uh, is what they charge for annual fees. But, um, with the exception of an event in Southlake, nobody charges individual, uh, additional rental fees for it. So at this time, um, the information, I met with, uh, Vicky, we went over some things. Right now, there's 19 food truck permits in the city. Um, that includes the snow cone stands and everything. So really, realistically, we have about 11 to 12 food trucks, uh, that use the switchyard or other city property. Typical days of operations, Wednesday through Sunday. Uh, we had six hookups. Um, uh, right now, the switchyard has over 1,000 followers on Instagram, uh, over 6,000 on Facebook, um, and that. And with the, uh, $250 fee that we currently have, that also includes the fire inspection and building inspection. So, um, going through that, I'm kind of recommending that we do away with any additional fees, with the exception of the farmer's market, charge them the $25. Well, it's currently $20 is what the other, um, booth fee is, but since the trucks are a little bigger, stay with the $25 for the farmer's market and $25 for special events.
So which listed on yours, which are concert in the park, fourth of July, training, grain and tree lighting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mayor, anything you'd like to add to that? This is your, yours.
I would like to thank, uh, Vicky and Jen for all the work they do.
Is your microphone on?
It is not. I would like to thank Vicky and Jen for all the work they do to keep that food truck park running smoothly. I would like to thank Paul for all of his research. And I think, you know, we want to do everything we can to keep this food truck going like it is. It's a huge, wonderful asset to our community. It's very well attended. Uh, people would be crushed if, if it went downhill or closed. And we would like to keep it going and even attract new trucks.
Counsel members, other questions, comments?
Mayor.
Mary, Cindy, please.
People are always getting us confused. Uh, and, and I think Mary and I figured out why, but we won't go there. Uh, Mayor, a lot of the information that Paul has provided tonight is what I have asked, uh, Gabe to bring to us from the staff previously, which is probably one of the reasons why we, uh, erred on the side of caution when we brought forth these fees. Uh, the one thing that I did ask Gabe before, uh, agreeing to bring this before counsel, that is not answered, is what sort of tax revenue, and Kim may be able to answer this, what sort of tax revenue do we get from these food trucks?
The, the majority of food trucks do not pay sales tax to the city of Saginaw. In the last 12 months, we've received about 2,000, a little less than $2,000. So the, the state requirement for food trucks is different than other entities that remit sales tax. And I guess the rationale is, it, they move, right? So they're not going to keep track of their sales in one city versus another city and then remit sales tax in different places. Um, they pick one point, one place, um, that they're registered usually, and that's where they remit sales tax. So the city receives very little sales tax off the food trucks.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, Counsel, other questions? I, I like Paul and Mary's proposal. I think, you know, we took a look at this, we tried something, it didn't work as well as we thought, so we'll, we're, we can adjust, we're flexible. So I, I, I do view the food truck park as an amenity we're offering to our citizens. I don't expect to make a lot out of it. People love it. I want people to stay in town. I want people to, as I've said before, eat, live, eat, play, and work in the city of Saginaw. This is part of the eat part, and people love to eat and they love food trucks. Uh, you hear a lot of compliments and, uh, comments about food trucks, so it's a very popular amenity to have. So I'm all for, what do we can do to keep them coming and keep them happy? No other discussing or questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve. Item number nine, with the $25 for the farmer's market and the special events and the rest of it, just their annual.
And amending the master fee schedule as well?
Yes, yes.
Do I have a second? Mr. Tucker, Charlie, please cast your votes. Most impressive. Thank y'all. Hey, and Vicky and Jen, thank y'all very much. I know y'all do the brunt of this and, uh, dealt with some angry folks, but hopefully we'll appease them and, uh, keep them coming back. We, we appreciate that.
I do have one quick question.
Go ahead.
Vicky, on here you put, you wanted some additional striping on the parking lot?
Yes. When we do the, um, when we have trucks that, um, generate, it's confusing. So I would like more strapping to, um, to the, you know, specific spots.
Randy, is that something the city can do?
Yeah, we can handle that.
Thanks for bringing that up, Valley.
I think she had another question.
Oh.
Or something, a statement?
Um, you put in that motion that it would be fourth of July, that's not held at the switchyard.
No, I said at the, uh, the special events. $25 for special events.
Okay, is that going to be just for switchyard?
That's what I would, that's what I took it at.
No, that's a good point, because the fourth of July was held at Saginaw High School this last year.
Yeah.
We had quite a few food trucks there. I would love to charge them. I bet they, I bet they would pay, because there were 5,000 people or more at the.
Well, let, ask this question, Vicky. How many, um, special events do most of the trucks come to, like train and grain, farmer's market?
The farmer's market.
Is different, yes.
Trucks come to, um, train and grain, we get in trucks that are not regulars to the switchyard, that, um, I wasn't involved in that, but we had trucks that came in. So if we required them to be permitted with the city of Saginaw to do a special event, then you're going to get their permit fee, whether they participate in the switchyard or not.
So that's $250.
Okay, so let me ask you this. What if you just did the special events that were on city property? Like concert in the parks, uh, and the tree lighting?
What would be the downside to doing fourth of July or training grain?
I don't know what's on the school. It would, it would be a down thing to me, but I was just thinking. I don't know.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, first of all, I'm still talking about this.
Yeah. Yeah, and you can come up here. Why don't you come up here to the, I should have Vicky come to the microphone, so everybody can hear you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. So just to answer on the fourth of July, and any events off-site of city property, we do charge food trucks a fee, uh, for training grain, I believe this year was 150. And for fourth of July, that was $50, but that's increasing just to the size of it. Um, just to bring competitiveness. So we do charge them outside.
Okay.
But they're okay with that, right? Okay.
That's where, we are bringing in crowds that.
Yeah. Thousands of people, it's guaranteed. There were, at fourth of July, people were lined up all night long. You couldn't hardly get to a food truck, so yeah.
Okay, okay.
And does this also include the food truck that's, food trucks that are over at the rec center?
That means city property, so if you said switchyard or city property.
Okay. I, I just wanted to be perfectly clear, so.
That means, uh, for a special event on rec.
I was just thinking, you know, there are food trucks out there, you know, throughout the week.
During the summer, right? And then during the fall?
No, they're out there now.
Are they? Okay.
And one of the other things that I had talked about was, um, I had asked Gabe to send the council a copy of the ordinance that we have for food trucks, and he only sent it to me, because I talked to a couple of council members. Um, our ordinance states that they're only allowed six hours in a 24-hour period to operate, and it had to be during, um, the business hours on that property. Are we enforcing that? Or do we need to change the ordinance?
I think if you, you probably need to change the ordinance, and the reason I say that is because there are some times when you have a, a food truck that's there for an all-day event. If at 6 o'clock, or, or six hours goes, oh, you got to get out of here. And, um, that, I don't know if that would be the best, uh, way to handle that.
I think, I think we need to look at changing the ordinance.
Yeah. I think, I think the original intent was not to keep people there spending the night and parking their truck and leaving it overnight type of thing, but.
But we did specify six hours in that ordinance, and I think we need, that needs to be addressed.
If somebody shows up, uh, like on a Saturday, which, uh, like, say they get there at nine o'clock in the morning, and they want to be there all day until 6 o'clock, do we kick them out after three, or after six hours, or do we let them have an opportunity to earn funds? That's, that's a coun, council decision.
I say, I wouldn't kick them out. I, we just don't want to spend the night. That's, that's the main thing.
I understand, but I think we need to change the ordinance.
We need to talk about that.
All right, so listen.
And that doesn't, that doesn't take much to do.
All right. Then let, who is in charge of that ordinance? Is that you, Keith? Is that under your purview?
I was glad to handle it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Keith. Appreciate that. Okay. Anything else? I think we're done. We're done on the food trucks? Excellent. Thank y'all. Uh, item 10, consideration of action regarding resident 2022 dash 25, Saginaw Home Improvement Program Implementation, Fire Chief Duck Spears, and Larry Little and Salvador. Who's going to speak on this? Chief?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Initial introduction of the home improvement program was at the October 8th council meeting. If you'll remember, Salvador presented overview of the program. It pretty much detailed the who, why, and where. We finalized the program, uh, which addresses the how. Uh, finalization includes the policy, the homeowner city agreement, the application, and the resolution, which requires adoption to implement the program. It's a result of a coordinated effort involving the building official, uh, obviously Salvador, who did most of the heavy lifting, the city manager, and Mr. Meredith and his associates. Uh, the documents before you includes the legal instrument that we have to implement in order to have the program. Uh, my apologies, we were revising some of those documents up through this morning. Hopefully y'all got the email and had a chance to review those. Uh, with adoption tonight, staff will begin introducing the plan to the citizens, and with that, we'll answer any questions or concerns you have about it.
Counsel questions? Mary, please.
Um, in that information, there was some, uh, we have three applicants right now, and that was going to go over the budget?
That was just an example.
Oh, okay. So we don't have a problem going over the budget right now?
No, ma'am.
And if we did have enough applicants that they would go over the budget, could we just temporarily take money from the general fund to, 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 to be able to give them the benefit?
We could handle that, just like you adopt things throughout the year. It will be, we could modify the budget either mid-year or year-end. Okay.
It would come back to council for council approval, yeah.
If, if that need was warranted, we would certainly bring it back, and not just, staff wouldn't decline that outright.
Well, I want to tell you, I'm excited about it.
Are there some of it need help?
We all intended for it to be very successful.
We are just targeting the Rancho North this, is this year or initially? What's the?
Correct. There's, there's funding this year, the way the program, uh, it coincides with the TAD, uh, taxing appraisals. So this year, there would be applicants for that. They wouldn't receive the rebate till after next year, but it, we do have funding in there this year. It has to roll until the next year. I talked to Kim on how that works, but it will start immediately. Once you do this, we'll get the word out and people can , uh, fill out the application for it.
So in the future, we'll target, potentially target other areas of the city?
Yes, sir. The thought was just to manage it and see how it's going to go, to pick the older area of town where it would have the, the biggest impact, but intent is to roll it out for the entire city.
And I just want to thank you for the work that you've done on this, you know, as I read through, as I read, well, I read through, as I read, well, you plural, but as I read through this, I was just overwhelmed by the fact like, oh, wow, I didn't think about that, didn't think about that. So, I think you guys did a great job.
We tried to cover all the places.
Thank you very much for your efforts.
Counsel, other questions? Seeing none, I will turn the motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve number two, item 10, consideration in action regarding resolution number 2022 dash 25 Saginaw Home Improvement Program Implementation.
Anything? Please cast your vote. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Salvador. Thank you to Larry as well. Excellent work. We look forward to this program being very successful. Item number 11, it's city personnel matters, and this was brought forth by Councilmember Tucker and Councilmember Big Horse. So, Councilmember Tucker, would you like to kick this off?
Yes, sir. I originally set this up for an executive session, and this was requested by Gabe to be held an open session. So, that's why we're doing this here instead of a, an executive session. Gabe originally was just going to go to Cambodia through some kind of State Department deal, and I wasn't letting on of it. I don't know who else in here was until it finally got out, and then I'm, I asked Gabe even, what good for Saginaw is a trip to Cambodia? And really, it's bettering him, which hopefully that would suffice, but he later on decided to take vacation for it. But that's what this was about, was to find out, you know, okay, your trip to Cambodia, what good is it for Saginaw?
Counselor Big Horse, you want to add anything?
Um, not really. I pretty much had the same concerns that Councilmember Tucker had. I was disappointed that Gabe did not bring this to council and let us know that he had an interest in this when he wanted to apply for this. I think it would have been more positive had he addressed the council. I'm concerned, because his statement was he wants to put Saginaw on the map. Hate to tell him this, but Saginaw is already on the map because of collections here in town. We have no idea of what his plan is to represent Saginaw in Cambodia or with the, how do you pronounce it, the YSLI organization? And it just seemed like the lack of transparency is an issue here, and I was just wondering how this ties in with our personnel policies here within the city.
Specifically such as?
Well, again, Gabe works for the council, and he did not have the, until the very last minute, he didn't even let us know that he was planning to do this trip, and even when he told us he was going on this trip, we have no idea what he plans to do to put Saginaw on the map, using his words, while he's there. And I kind of agree with Councilmember Tucker that this may be more for his benefit than to benefit the city of Saginaw.
Okay.
Mayor, I have one, I'd like to speak.
Go ahead.
Mayor, council members, employees, and citizens of Saginaw. I want to say first of all that this incident is not about having to take professional hours. Every employee has some sort of in-service or professional hours needed for their position in every profession. I ask an employee about how many hours and the cost of professional hours that is required for our city manager. And then the council immediately received an email from Gabe while he's on his vacation about everyone taking professional hours. This is not what this is about. This is about following policies written for all employees of Saginaw. I would like to say that when Gabe sent his weekly email on November 18th, he stated that he would be out of the office the first week of December and would be in Cambodia participating in the Young Southeast Asian Leaders Initiative Summit.
That's what it's called.
Yes. All expenses were going to be paid through the Asian Foundation and the U.S. Department of State. I thought it was wrong for the council to be told that he was leaving the country for professional development and not asking, since it's not our policy for employees. I wrote an email to the council members and the mayor on November 21st and asked their opinion on the situation. I even talked to the attorney about the incident. Gabe is under the city council, and I feel like he should have asked the council instead of telling us that he was leaving. I was also wondering who was paying for his time, because it wasn't in his budget, and it wasn't on his work plan, and I wondered if he was going to take his vacation or whatever. I read our professional and civic development rules, and it reads, "The city agrees to budget for mutually agreed civic and professional membership dues and subscriptions of the city manager necessary for the manager's continuation and participation in national, regional, state, and local associations, necessary in desire before the manager's continued professional participation, growth, advancement, and for the good of the city." The city agrees to pay for such memberships and subscriptions upon approval by the mayor. Developing and maintaining a professional association contacts and standings provide our city access to valuable resources and reasonable participation in related travel by the manager as provided for in the annual budget will be a part of the manager's duties. It does not state anywhere this is for participation in an international event or association. Associations are usually joined, you join an association to better your position or whatever it's, unless it's required by the city, and I don't think our city requires that. After the incident was brought out, Gabe included in his weekly report on Friday of December the 2nd, and he was going to use his vacation for his trip. If he's on vacation, why would he be checking and answering emails? There seems to be very strong emphasis on international things like the Sister City Program, brought the delegation to the Training Grain Festival, and now serving as a facilitator at the summit. And that's all great, but we have events and employ here that are just as important. On Thursday, December the 1st, I talked to Todd. He wanted to talk about the incident and it being on the agenda. After I explained that I did not put it on the agenda, I just sent an email. During our conversation, he told me I was being petty about the incident. Being petty means of no importance. Tax dollars to me are important, but what is more important is the fact that Gabe decided to do this. It's not in our policy for professional development. It's not helping our city, but most of all, the other employees have to follow their policies, and he should have to also. When a council member is voted to a position on the council, the citizens that voted on them want to make sure that we are all being good stewards of our tax dollars and where they are spent. I felt like this was not a good way to spend tax dollars. And Brian, if Gabe is, this is a question for Brian, if Gabe is on vacation, can he represent the city in the capacity, this capacity?
So, i, i, that begs the question what representation is. So, when, when we attend statewide or national conferences, we'll wear a name badge that says city manager, city attorney, city of Saginaw. I don't know that that is binding the city in any capacity. So, obviously, to, to answer your question in the strictest, strictest form, no, I mean, he can't enter into an agreement and bind the city of Saginaw while he's participating in a conference, but it's also not improper to identify yourself and your position and your job while you're at a, a conference.
Okay.
So, even on vacation.
I was more worried about if he's on vacation and something was to come up, like I told Todd, if something was to come up, would we be bound to take care of, you know what I'm saying? That's why I was asking that question, basically.
So, we, okay, just so I understand your question, so would we be bound to do what? I'm sorry.
Well, just say like something happened, he's in a foreign country, third world nation, something happens, and they got upset and tried to sue the city because Gabe was there representing us. Would we be bound to take care, you know, to pay for his legalities or whatever if something did happen?
So, no, because he'd be on his personal leave.
Okay.
That's right, and, and it would, I can't imagine he would expect...
No, I don't think so, but I mean, weirder things have happened this year, okay? So, I feel like the city manager, whoever it is, should be the first one to follow our policy, to show our employees that everyone should do as our policy is written. No employee should be able to do as they want and not expect the council to agree on it or us just to be okay with it. I feel like that if any city manager under our employ plans on doing anything like this in the future, we should add to the policy that it must go through city council and be budgeted for that event. And if it doesn't do good for our city, it shouldn't be considered.
Other council members' input? Councilmember Flay? Councilmember Copeland?
I was reminding myself of Gabe's email to us on November 28th, where he was discussing this issue, and he says to quote, "As an, as a CMA cred, credentialed manager, I have to complete at least 40 hours of dedicated professional development activities throughout the year to maintain my credentialed certification. Professional and civic development is outlined and encouraged in my own employment agreement with the city. How does this benefit the city? It supports professional development and continues to bring recognition to Saginaw as a place where people can learn and grow from around the world. I was asked by the Asia Foundation through the U.S. Department of State to serve as a small group facilitator to the 2022 YSEALI Summit, which will be held in Phnom Penh, Cambodia, from December 5th through the 9th. I will be working on strategic planning and project management skills with young professionals and facilitators from across the U.S. and world. I'm very grateful for this opportunity to share, grow, and learn." So, you know, the State Department's paying for it. This is a wonderful opportunity for personal growth that, that also helps our city. Any staff member in the city that has an opportunity like this, I would think we would be joyful about it and proud of this person, and certainly encourage this type of growth and development and continuous improvement by any and all of our staff members.
Mary, can I add one thing?
Sure.
This right here is his employment agreement, and it does not say anything about international. So, that's why I said if we, if we need to put international, we need to change it, but until then, he needs to follow the rules like they're written.
Just, uh, a thought, I believe in transparency. If I'm going to do something for my job, I've got to ask permission, and I think an event like this, he should have came forth to us and asked for our blessing to do this. He knew about it at the last council meeting, had plenty of opportunity, and going forward, any of these events, I think he should have to come to us and get permission.
And he probably would have got it, in all honesty. It's just that he didn't bring it forward.
To be quite frank, this is embarrassing. That's why I asked to do this in the executive session. It was Gabe that wanted to do it in open session. Now, we're sitting out here airing our dirty laundry in front of everybody.
Is it really dirty laundry? I, I see no policies that were broken. He's on his own vacation, and he's getting paid by the State Department. We didn't spend a dime. The city's not spending a dime of money, let's be clear. Was he, was he not clear? Was he not, did he not communicate as well as he should have? Absolutely. He should, he should have communicated better.
Sure.
He told me about this a month ago. Whenever, I don't even remember. And I said, it sounds like a great opportunity, you should do it. And I assumed it would be vacation, and we didn't talk about that. So, should he have communicated better with the council? Absolutely. But as far as him dirty laundry and him breaking the policies, that is not true. He broke no policy, he broke no laws, there's nothing wrong with this. We're not paying a dime for this. This is good for Gabe, it's good for the international community. I mean, he's a passionate city manager, he's part of that community. He, he wants to mentor folks, he wants to learn. That's what we brought, we've had exchanged folks from its YSEALI, whatever it is.
Young Asian.
Yeah, that one. We've had folks come from Myanmar and other places here to the city to observe U.S. democracy and government action. That's a great thing. It's a great thing for the world, and that's what Gabe is doing there. The State Department reached out to him, I don't think he went to them, and said, can you do this? Would you like to do this for us? So, that was an honor. So, I believe it was a great thing for Gabe. I, I see no reason for us to, you know, penalize Gabe for this. It's a cool thing he's doing. Should he have maybe been more communicated transparent? Sure, that's a lesson learned, absolutely. But as far as to say anything was done wrong, it was not. It's not costing the citizens a dime. He's got vacation days, he can use them how he pleases. So, I, I, again, I said this was petty, it was probably a poor choice of words. I do think it's not worthy of council's time to discuss. I think this was not something we should have talked to Gabe about. Ideally, if you have a dis, concern with one person that works, who you like Gabe works for us, you talk to him individually. You don't send out emails, you don't bring it to council, you talk to him individually. As an adult, that's how you handle it professionally. So, that's how I would have preferred this had been handled. It was not handled that way, so we have to bring it here to council, and that's unfortunate.
Can I ask one question?
Hold on. It's unfortunate. I wish they didn't do that. We all could have handled this a little better, Gabe, council, everybody included, so hopefully we'll learn from this and move forward. And if we want, if we need to update policies, I wanted this whole thing to be more of a policy discussion than personnel. I think it'd be more productive. So, if we need to address policies based on this, we can discuss it, absolutely. We, we're always open to tweaking our policies and things. I talked to Brandon about this. I became aware, just to understand any legal repercussions, the issues, and of course, there were none. So, that was, that's where we are. So, go ahead.
Well, I'm just asking this question, just because if you break one policy and you don't get it brought to attention, what would stop you from breaking the other one?
He didn't break a policy.
He did, yes, he did.
He didn't break a policy. What policy did he break?
On his thing, it says national. It doesn't say anything about international. It's right here.
That's just not, that's not correct, because this is not, we're not paying...
Mayor, four people, four people on your council are concerned by the lack of transparency, and that, that is something that needs to be addressed.
And I, I, so I agree.
If it was one or two, that would be different, but there are four people sitting here that are concerned about this. And I have to agree with Valerie, I, I believe, because it says, it doesn't say anything about international. Gabe should have come to us with a plan. When he was asked to apply for this, he should not have waited until he had his tickets and he was ready to go. Yes, Gabe made a mistake, and yes, the council's not happy about it, and that's all we're trying to say.
I would just disagree, there was no policy was broken. Brian, can you explain, or we, you explain what we're talking about, are we, this is his employment agreement, right?
What?
This is it, in his employment agreement, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Right, so, it, I think, sorry to sound like a lawyer, but I think everyone's correct in some degree, right? So, if, if he could...
Everybody in for this, too.
That's right. So, if this is a professional development opportunity where he's going to be compensated for his time while he's there, then I agree. The contract does not contemplate international conferences, et cetera. So, I had a candid conversation with him on the phone, and I said, there's not enough time for you to seek the approval that you should secure in order to do this. And I, and I advised him, in my opinion, you need to use personal time for this. And he agreed immediately, to his credit, and he sent that email after speaking with me about it. And I said that there really is no other alternative at this juncture other than for you to use personal leave, and he said he has a significant amount, because he doesn't use it very often, and that he would do it right away. So, I agree, there's a lesson learned here. I agree that he should have come forward and asked for permission if he, if he was inclined to use personal development time for this and have that count towards that purpose. And pursuant to the agreement, he needed council permission, but I also agree that he did the right thing at the end of the day, and as a result, he didn't ultimately break, he, he didn't violate his contract by taking personal leave for this.
Because he did take his vacation, yes, sir. I got you.
All right, I do have two people who want to speak on this, and I don't want to forget them. John Pete, Mr. Pete, would you like to speak on this?
I'll go first.
You can go first.
He wants to go second.
Mr. Russell, Rick Russell, you want, will you go first, Mr. Russell? Have to beg people to speak.
Mayor, I wish you'd told me that it was breaking the law and I couldn't. After that, but thank you, council and mayor, for letting me speak this evening. I want to be very clear about something. I'm not against sister cities. Make that real clear. I'm not against it. In fact, I think it's a great program. With regard to sister cities, I think the leadership of the city should do a bit more research on your own. And, and the council should be provided a more complete picture of any program, whether it's sister cities or whatever. And you should be provided a complete picture initiating them or continuing them. Because Mayor, you made a good comment. You, you're, the council's ready to change if you need to make a change, like you did on the food trucks. That's what I'm saying here. So in the, in the case of Gambia, I don't, I don't disagree that they, that they should have come. Them coming is great. What I disagree with is the city paying for it. It, it wasn't a lot of money. And it's, I'm, it's real easy, I'm mindful of the fact I can sit here and you've already made the decisions, and I can judge you on those decisions, which I don't really have a right to do. But you were told initially, if I understood the online meetings, that this would not cost the city a penny. And then you were told later it would. That's when, that should have been the trigger for you to start doing your own research about the coun- possibly the country of Gambia. And I'm not just going to complain to you tonight, I've got a couple of suggestions. The mayor is well aware of my attitude. I'm not going to come tell you something if I don't have a suggestion to improve. I'm not just going to complain. Paul, you know I'm the same way. Just FYI, Gambia has several sister cities in the U.S. Several. I didn't find one city, after speaking with three mayors, not one city paid for them to come. Every one of the cities are much larger than Saginaw. So I'm just asking you, make the decision, make the fidu- the financial decision on what's right for Saginaw. Was it right for them to come? Absolutely. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, please do your research. That said, one of the purposes of the delegation was to sit down and exchange ideas with the city council. Council, mayor, I think you should publish these meetings. And publish the sit downs with all, with the delegation so that we as citizens can see the value in these types of exchanges. Otherwise, we just think there's money being spent.
We didn't have a meeting, did we?
We didn't have an official meeting with them. They came to a council meeting and then they took tours of the city, we met with them individually and things. We did not have an official sit down, that's it. But except for when they came to council.
But I really wished we would have had more time with them, more meetings with them, and that never happened. City manager had several meetings with them, but not the council, which I think was kind of against the spirit of the sister city program.
Oh, and I hate, I hate to say this, but is Janice the timekeeper?
It's supposed to be me, but I don't have the clock going, so.
Okay, Mayor, thank you very much. Anyway, so I think that would be a good idea for those of the, that met with them and exchanged ideas. I think that would be a great thing to put on the, the Facebook page or whatever. So that we, from, from everything we paid for, this is proof we got our money's worth. Did we get our money's worth? That's for you to decide, not me. So the second thing I want to talk about is the funding, and this came up earlier tonight. The funding for the Gambian delegation is just one example where, and, and I'm going to use the word tuning, Mayor, is maybe we tune some of the processes and, and some of the things that, that you as a council, and you have a very tough job. You get to do all this, and I get to go do the research after you've made the, the decision. So you're at a disadvantage. But is, in 2018, I was on the committee that was mentioned earlier about what Saginaw needed. And, and in that meeting, we paid a contractor to lead the meetings and moderate the meeting so that we didn't just spend a bunch of time arguing back and forth. And we did that, and it was a wonderful session. Thank you for putting that together. But we paid someone, and that's okay. And then we come out with a survey, and we paid someone, and they asked the same questions, basically. Were they exactly the same? No, but they were ninety percent the exact same thoughts. And then we did another one, and the Facebook survey. How many times are we going to pay for the same answers? Again, it's easy for me to stand on this side. But that's why I'm saying, maybe the process of the stewardship can be in the back of your minds and, and, you know, and, and whatnot going forward. I do agree, if you look at just one of these things, it's, it's tiny. It's not a lot of money. I mean, the, thanks to Kim, we spent just a little under thirteen thousand dollars to bring Gambia. That's pennies. I admit it. But if we add up everything we pay for, for twelve months, that's my challenge to you. I'm not saying don't do them, but has a lot of good thought and research gone behind, do we want to do this? So to the four council members that responded to my email, thank you. I appreciate your time. Now, Mayor, for my suggestions. I think the city manager should focus on day-to-day operations. And as, as far as mentioning the professional development, yeah, we, we had that at IBM. You have it at your place of employment as well, and we have to do that. I, at least at IBM, the qualifications for those professional developments courses were clearly identified and categorized as to what qualified for those. I don't know about city managers, and I'm going to be the first to admit that. I don't know what theirs is. But we pay Gabe well. So maybe we delegate that to someone that can assist Gabe in looking at those different opportunities international that we can do. And I also believe that we need to require that, that the council be given the recent State Department analysis of the countries we're going to invite, or where we're going to go. I'm not going to go into details, some of you may not think this is important. I personally believe it's important, especially if we're representing Saginaw. I also think, from a spending perspective and the contractors that we, the vendors perspective, and Mr. Attorney, I'm not talking about our, our city attorney, by any means. We adopt something similar in our procedures as the state of Texas. State of Texas was my customer for over fifteen years. If there was anything on the table, and by that I mean a deal, a partnership, anything financially based, I was not allowed to buy them a meal. I was not allowed to give them gifts. It's in several cities, it's in several states. There's even customers. I couldn't give a Walmart employee an ink pen, or they would be fired. That just brings the bar up for integrity. So, Mr. Mayor, council, those are my recommendations. I, you know, thinking about how you spend your money, Dave Crockett has a really, Davy Crockett has a really good quote. And his quote was, "We have the right as individuals to give away as much of our own money as we, as we please." And I'm going to stop the quote there.
Your own money.
Our own money. That's right. So as always, I'm at your service, and thank you very much for.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Pete?
I got a chance to, I guess, find out why the city manager isn't there and his name tags off. I agree with you, Ford, that basically want transparency. Mr. Mayor, I disagree that professional development, being a former Marine, I had to take out courses and stuff like that that I had to read. And then courses I had to take online, and not online, but Marine Corps University, professional development courses I had to take. I disagree with you one hundred percent. Cambodia, I wouldn't exactly say it's the most non-corrupt country in the world, same thing with Gambia. So if he's over there, just like being a Marine, he's representing Saginaw whether he knows it or not. That's bad for him again. Bad for him, bad reputation he's got. I would take that thirteen thousand dollars and give it to our law enforcement and our fire department as bonuses for them working when he's gone, especially on holidays. So I really disagree with you, that's bad for him. And yeah, y'all elected, and I guess, thanks for bringing it up. Gabe, I don't think that, bad decision. It makes, makes everybody look bad, makes you look bad, Mr. Mayor, for agreeing that he didn't do anything wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Pete. All right, anyone else? I think we've got everybody covering this. Anything else on item 11? Thank y'all, folks. All right, so I made a mistake, I just saw this, and I apologize. Item nine, food truck, I had several people that wanted to speak on that, and I did not bring them up. I'm very sorry. It is, it's not, if you want to speak now, you can, absolutely. I know it's after the vote, I'm sorry. No, but if anybody wants to speak now, you can. It's absolutely, it's on the agenda, just.
Is that on the food truck?
It's on the food truck. I, I had those, and I'm sorry. So if anybody else here would like to speak, you're certainly.
You don't have a food truck, don't you?
Okay.
I just want to thank you, Neil. Basically, we're the smallest of small business, definitely not getting rich quick. I am paying all my taxes, I believe the Saginaw, because I put a switch yard, and there's a credit card machine, so you won't be getting all my taxes.
Yay, thank you.
And who are you?
Tasty Steaks, yeah.
Tasty Steaks, all right, great.
All right, any other food truck folks who wants to speak?
I know one of the concerns was taxes.
You can speak, you can speak there.
And we, we do, I know me and my husband own Salsa Zone. Our plan initially was to open a brick and mortar in Fort Worth. But just the, we've been, just what we've noticed, the city, they've just catered to us and allowed us, you know, brought us in with open hands, arms. So we've already considered like, you know, maybe down the road, opening a Saginaw instead of Fort Worth. We're also considering down the road, once we get out of the red horses, doing a scholarship for, for Saginaw seniors. So yes, maybe state taxes are not a lot, but the investment that the small business owners have within these, within this community of Saginaw is, is a lot. And I think it's, you know, it is a benefit that we, we try to bring to the community. Operating in the winter sometimes doesn't bring us profit. However, we go out to fill up, to fill in the gap of Saginaw residents in 2018 said they wanted more restaurants. Of course, 2020, there were, the pandemic, switch yard opened, we filled in that gap. So we have a commitment to the community of Saginaw. Maybe not taxes that way, but we do have a commitment for sure.
We're glad to have you all here, really. Rick?
Just a quick comment. You talked about changing the ordinance for food trucks. I would just ask that you remember that there are organizations that bring in food trucks that are not affiliated with the city.
All right.
Do they have to be with the city, right?
They, they should be, in terms of with the city to operate in the city of Saginaw.
And y'all do watch that real careful, don't you, Vicky?
I will now.
There you go. All right, thank you all. And again, I'm, my apologies, folks, I did not mean to skip y'all, that was my mistake. So we're going to item number 12 as executive session pursuant to Texas government code 551.071, 551.072, and I think 551.087. We will be in executive session at 7:44. We will return to adjourn.
Better take them back to the executive section.
Sorry, thank you for that. Yeah, and we, we really had a bad last month. We got yelled at, threatened, threatened. So we just appreciate you guys being patient and realizing that it's a process. And we literally had to come to the city council, so thank you for being kind. It was really, Vicky and I really, we were almost in tears, something, because we were just. I mean, food trucks are like, we loved you a week ago, but now, that's all. Thank you for believing that we can change things. Yeah, and I, I was just thinking, like, it's a bad reflection of us, of the food owner, to text us and to go on social media and act cool and things like that. So I'm glad that you guys, we believe in you, we love you guys, so. Yeah, and twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, it's better than the board.
It's better than forty, and honestly, they, you know, we can justify now getting more books is one of the big things, so nobody ever must be ungenerous. So that was one of this, it's, we lose a lot of money in this. Yeah, we're going to get, we're going to get in better bathrooms, like one or two bathrooms in our backyard. Yeah, are y'all going to the, um, market? Okay, so you pay the forty, Vicky's going to get with them on how to get in the fifteen. So I don't know how that'll work exactly, but we know you guys already made the forty. That's, that's Mr. Phil's advice, and honestly, we were like, we were going to be like, he said thirty, we'd be like, okay, that's fine. Twenty-five, it's fair, and it's just for special events. The report is like forty dollars a day on a Monday. Which, no. So like, y'all can come out on non-market Saturday, Sunday, during the week if you want. That was, when we read forty dollars a day, was it like? I don't think they realized that until you guys sent us, and other trucks sent us financial info, being transparent. And that was what Mr. Phil, he actually read what y'all wrote, and he took these takes. And he was like, I didn't realize they come out and they don't make a profit, and they just keep coming out. And we're like, yeah, they come out because they love it.
Thanks for having us.
It makes it, it made it.
I was told that Vicky could be nice and beat up a little bit, but I'm not there.
Oh, my goodness.